All right, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order if everyone would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening to everyone. On our June meeting, schools are starting to wind down a little bit. We've got graduation coming up this week, so this is a big week for Pamlico County Schools. We've got one board member who's not here yet, but she is on the way, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Everybody's had a chance to review the minutes of our April 3, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting and the minutes of our April 3 and April 26 special call meetings. So I'm gonna start with the April 3 meeting first. If there's no changes to be made to that, I'll accept a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Now moving on to our April 3 and April 26 special called meetings, if there's no changes to those, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hands. All right, everybody's had a chance to look at the, no, we didn't have any closed session minutes, do we? Okay. 1.4, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Moving on to our matters of the public, our good news, Mr. Rice.
Thank you. Mr. Prescott, may I help you, please? Good evening. Tonight's good news will be the Rotary Students of the Month from Pamlico County Middle School and Pamlico County High School. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, we have Caitlin Mizell, grade eight. Ms. Lanchy had this to say about Caitlin. Caitlin effortlessly pursues excellence in all circumstances. She is honest, trustworthy, and reliable. In everything that she does, academics and behavior, she upholds the standards of PCMS and sets an example for her classmates. Caitlin is a model student who always treats others with respect and empathy and is a future world changer. She will accomplish whatever she sets her mind to. In the words of one of her classmates, "I can't put Koi's," that's her nickname, "Koi's awesomeness into words." Congratulations, Pamlico County Middle School's Rotary Student of the Month, Caitlin Koi Mizell. Next, our person from the high school, I don't believe has come in, but I will recognize her anyway, and that is Hakima Barber. And Ms. Holden had this to say about Hakima. Hakima is determined, tenacious, kind, welcoming, and always wears a smile. In fact, her smile is so infectious that Ms. Collins has said, "When you see Hakima, you can't help but smile." She works very hard in her classes and consistently shows up each and every day, ready to do better and try harder than the day before. She is so driven that no obstacle in life will stand in her way. In addition to working hard in her academic courses, she is also heavily involved in our athletics program, having participated in volleyball, basketball, and tractor field. She is the epitome of school spirit and can always be seen or heard cheering on her peers. Hakima has such a positive and encouraging vibe and is a friend to everyone with whom she comes in contact. After graduation, she plans to attend North Carolina Central University to earn a degree in hospitality and then plans to pursue culinary school. At PCHS, we feel that everyone needs a Hakima in their life. Congratulations to Pamlico County High School's Rotary Student of the Month, Hakima Barber. We will see that Hakima gets her certificate, and that is the end of good news for this evening, and you're welcome to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting, or feel free to do what you do.
Thank you.
All right, no public comment for tonight. Moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, don't let the size of this superintendent's report make you think it's indicative of what we've been doing around here, because it is short and sweet tonight. Membership report as of May 23, we have a plus two for the primary school, holding steady at Fred Anderson, a minus one at the middle, minus one at the high school for an overall of remaining the same, plus zero. I'd like to announce that we will have our summer hours in the offices at the schools as well as here, actually starting next week on June the 12th. It'll be from 7:00 to 5:00, and we'll do that through August the 11th, so that means we will be here 7:00 to 5:00 Monday through Thursday. Fridays, the buildings will be closed. Upcoming school events, there's a lot, and there has been a lot going on, and if you're on any social media or look at our website, you probably see all that we've been doing around here for the last few weeks with all the awards programs and ceremonies. But some of the things that we have left this week that are very special was our pre-K graduation tomorrow at 9 o'clock at the primary school, and then eighth grade graduation on Thursday night at 6:00, and then, of course, high school graduation at 7:00 on Friday night. So real excited about those things. Lots of testing going on right now. The high school started today. The other schools, some have finished, some are still testing, so we're real excited to see how those results come out. Under miscellaneous, I just have very, very busy summer. We're gonna have kids in and out, and staff actually in and out of our schools this summer, so follow us on our websites or our social media to get a lot of that information. I had a principal, my very first principal, Mr. James Lanier, used to say, "We're on the short rows now, plow to the end of the row," and that's what I keep telling my people now, just plow to the end of the road, because we're getting very close. So anyway, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Always at this time, I give my fellow board members, if they'd like to share anything since our last meeting. I will share. I went to the high school athletic banquet the other night, and our student athletes have performed very well, and it was the winter and spring sports, so we should be proud of the accomplishments that our student athletes achieved this year in athletics.
I had an opportunity to attend and participate in the academic scholarship night and was very proud of our students.
Any other board members? All right, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, we've got five items on there. All of them are trips that are planned. A lot of them are for our students this summer. If we need to pull any of those out individually and vote on them individually, we can. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, moving on. Let me check, Mr. Page, instructions, nothing. Finance, Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Item 6.1 is an update on the status of the local current expense and capital outlay budgets for the 2023-24 school year. And I think you have two handouts or a handout in your packet, page, two pages, if you will turn to that. The first page, page one of two, basically shows our funding for this year, and this is the funding from the county for current expense and capital outlay, what we requested from the county for 2023-24, and the dollar amount and percent increase. So the Board of Education approved this budget back in March, and then we presented this budget to the county commissioners at their May 15 meeting and have been to several budget meetings since then. So what has happened so far, if you look on the second page, the original information, the first page, that is what's on the left of page two, that's in the gray, in the shaded gray, that's the same information. And then on the right are the adjustments from the county, and as you can see, their intention is not to totally fund us from what we asked for. They have, from our increase we requested for current expense, they reduced that by $114,399 for funding of about $4.5 million. And you see the breakup, the breakdown between funding that will come to us and the funding that will go to a Rappahoe Charter School. That's a total dollar increase of $194,400 or four and a half percent increase. And if you look over there to the left, we requested almost $309,000, a 7.15% increase in funding. Capital outlay, we asked for $444,945. They cut us by about $45,000, and the proposed funding is $400,000, the same we received this year. So total increasing funding is $194,400. It's $159,000 less than what we originally requested, and the total increase is 4.12%. The, after we made the formal presentation on May 15, Ms. Jackson and I and several others have attended two of their budget meetings. This four and a half percent was a recommendation from the county manager to the county commissioners. There was a lot of discussion in those two meetings, but they never made a motion. They never made any changes to this four and a half percent until this past Friday. Then the phone started ringing, and over the weekend, I know there was a lot of conversation between some board members and county commissioners. So keep this in front of you, and I'm gonna give you, basically, and Mr. Prescott, you can jump in any time. They approached us with a scenario of to what they will do in order to fund half of the increase in the local teacher supplement. As you know, we're 11% now. We have requested to go to 12%. That was gonna be, it's gonna cost about $76,000, $75,000, $76,000 to do. They were not willing to fund all that, but they said they would be interested in funding half of that. And so after Mr. Prescott and I and Ms. Jackson talked, we came up with a scenario we thought was a little bit better. Part of their scenario was taking money away from capital and putting it towards current expense. So what I have is a, let me pass this out. All right, tell me, scenario number one is what they presented to us. Do you like that? And one of the main reasons was we didn't want them taking $20,000 out of our capital outlay fund and move it to current expense. So what we came up with was scenario two, and Mr. Prescott can elaborate on that. I think they have verbally agreed to this second scenario as far as funding goes. The county commissioners will decrease capital outlay by $13,200, so that will decrease our request from $400,000 to $386,800, and they will increase current expense by $43,200. So what they're doing is they're taking $13,200 from capital and adding $30,000 more to current expense. So the total current expense budget will go up and will be $4,557,600. All right, so this additional $43,200 will go towards increasing the teachers' local supplement from 11% to 12%. Of that $43,200, a Rappahoe Charter School would receive $5,700 of that. Remember, any increase or any change in local current expense funding has to be shared with a Rappahoe Charter School. So they'll get $5,700, and we would get $37,500. $75,000 is what's needed to increase the local supplement from 11% to 12%, so we would need to appropriate an additional $37,500. What scenario do, scenario number two does is they put in the same amount of money that we're putting in to make, to be able to move that supplement from 11% to 12%, okay? We felt like that was a better situation for us. I would rather the least amount of money come out of capital, and we would just appropriate a little bit more fund balance. We've got $100,000 appropriated right now, and so we would bump that up to 137.5. And I'm sure that's clear as mud. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to.
So to elaborate a little bit on that, as Mr. Curtis said, you know, we were approached, I've had several conversations with Chairman Riggs, I've had conversation with Commissioner Forrest, and they really want our two boards to work together to get this supplement up to 12%. To really make us have the most attractive supplement for our teachers of any of our surrounding counties, and also help us retain the quality teachers that we do have now. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a concession. It's just saying, okay, we want to do this, but we need your additional help in making both boards accomplish this. So this is a win, and the win is for our teachers. They're the ones that are gonna benefit from, benefit the most from this, and they need to. 12% supplement in this part of the state with a county this small, that's pretty impressive, in my opinion.
It is.
Brian's giving me, he gave me the deer in the headlights looks, like you're right. So basically, Mr. Curtis laid it out very well here. We will have to appropriate 37.5 out of fund balance, but I think that's a, I don't have any questions that one bit, because that money's gonna go to our teachers. Any questions on this, or does it make sense? Mr. Curtis did a good job, so.
They're gonna be discussing it tonight.
Yeah, and at the commissioners' meeting tonight, they're gonna be discussing the same thing. And in my conversations with Chairman Riggs, we both kinda left it that he feels that he will get the needed support to support this, and, but it does have to come to a vote with his board, and I shared the same sentiment that I feel like our board will have the needed support to support this, and hopefully, after both meetings tonight, we can say that our teachers will be receiving a 12% supplement for next year. So with this being a change to our budget, we would have to, I would need a motion to approve this, need a second, and then we would take a vote.
Do we need to wait till they vote on it first?
No, we can go ahead and move forward, yeah.
What if they don't?
If they don't approve it, regardless if we approve it tonight or don't approve it tonight, but if we do approve it and they don't approve it, it's a moot point. But I think it's a good show of faith on our part to, that we could bring it up for a vote now. And Mr. Curtis, after his presentation, he's actually gonna go to the commissioners' meeting to be there in case there's any other questions regarding our budget that comes up.
So just one question.
Okay.
In the event that they don't approve it, do we have a backup plan or a contingency plan, or?
Just go back to the original.
So our backup plan, we, the way I look at it, we got two choices. If we do not get the additional funding from them, then we could, we would fall back on our 11% teacher supplement. If we wanted to go to 11.5%, we could still appropriate 37.5. If we wanted to do the full 12%, then we would have to appropriate the, that's not, how much is that, Steve? 37.5, 75?
75.
Yeah.
And we'll, in just a minute, we'll talk about a special board meeting at the end of June for year-end budget documents that need to be approved. And if the county commissioners do not approve this, then at that time, I'll come back and present again to the board based on your wishes to have it approved then. It just has to be approved by June 30.
I don't work.
Kathy?
I agree with what you've said, Mr. Prescott, and I feel strongly that we need to do what we can to retain our quality teachers, and, you know, and they deserve the supplement. I think it's a great opportunity for us to do that with the commissioners being willing to help out in this way. And so I think it's a win-win situation. So if there are no further questions, I'd like to make a move that we go with the scenario two and approve that.
So Ms. Dunbar has made a motion. Is there any other discussion?
Second.
Okay, I have a second on the motion, so with that, I'll call for a vote. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, unanimously approved, so we can, we can send that message to the commissioners tonight if we need to. And thank you to all our board members for taking that stand, you know, for our teachers. So, hopefully, after the commissioners' meeting tonight, we'll be able to let our...our teachers know that they will be receiving a 12% supplement next year. So, that's great. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Item 6.2 is a request for a special board of education meeting to approve financial end-of-year documents. And we do this every year. Obviously, if it's...if there's a change in the...what the county commissioners want to do, we'll come back and discuss this at that meeting. But for the most part, this meeting is for year-end budget amendments to present an interim budget resolution for July until the state passes their budget and we get everything from the Department of Public Instruction. I am suggesting Wednesday, June 28th. The closer to the end of the year, the better for me. But either the 28th is...would work fine. It can be during the day, it can be in the evening, that doesn't matter. So, I'm very flexible with that. I'd rather not do it on Friday, the 30th. But we could do the 29th, or we could do Tuesday. Just whatever fits best for the schedule of the board members.
How does the 28th, that's a Wednesday? I mean, everybody's looking at their calendars. Ms. Ellen, how about you?
I prefer the afternoon.
Okay. Would...which would work better, 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock, 5:30?
2 o'clock is good for me.
Okay. So, the 28th at 5, anybody else have any conflicts with that date and time? Everybody's checking their calendars.
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock, on the 28th. Eric, are you good with that?
I think so, yes.
Mr. Dudley, Mr. McCotter? And Ms. Ellen, is I in? All right, this end of the table, I'm waiting on y'all.
Yes, for me.
It'll work, okay. All right, so we'll set it for June 28th at 5 o'clock. And I know Tiffany will send us several reminders before that date and time. All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cur...Mr. Curtis. I know you're heading to the commissioners' meeting, so it's good. Thank you. All right, moving on to 7.1. I think this is gonna be something exciting for the board and for everybody else that is here at the meeting. So, at this time, I'm gonna let Ms. Jackson introduce our guest who will be making the presentation.
So, I'm very excited to have with us tonight Ms. Miyuki Keller from SFLENA, which are...she's actually the lead architect working on our building right now. So, we have had a meeting recently, and she has made some changes based on some recommendations from actually the board at the last building meeting that we had. So, we're gonna have these boards up, plus Ms. White is gonna put them on the screens as well. And so, Ms. Keller, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and you're gonna need to put that microphone in your hand.
Hire 'em, get your camera ready. I know a lot of folks in the county will also be excited to see these photographs or these artist renditions.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Miyuki Keller. I'm the project architect for this project, and I wanna thank you guys for having me this evening. So, again, as it has already been shared, we have taken some of the comments and the feedback that was provided by the board, and we were able to push forward our design and come up with the design that we have tonight to present to you guys. So, if you...could you go ahead and enlarge that so it...'cause I...oh, I guess you have the PDF. That's fine. So, if you could zoom out, actually, zoom out just a little bit so we could see the entire site. So, this is the entire...the entire campus for the new high school and the new middle school. So, as you see it now, just to kind of orient you to where you are, you can see the building that we're in right now is to the far-left corner. Perfect, that's so much better. In the far-left corner, you can see the building that we're in now as well as the high school track and field. And then, you can see in the far-right corner is going to be our new...the new ball field. So, currently, we have slated the varsity baseball team. The varsity baseball field is going to be the one in the center. And then, in the future, we'll be adding on a middle school baseball field as well as the varsity softball field. So, that is in the works currently, and we're excited to kind of show you a little preview of what that's going to look like and what that's gonna add to the campus. So, as you see right now, the sort of your main thoroughfare is there on the front side, and we have the main building on...right in the center, as you see. With the two existing buildings, we have your auditorium up front as well as the cafeteria. And I wanna make note to the board, right now, we're showing both of these buildings. I know that there is right now up for debate on what to do with the cafeteria. Currently, as we're doing the design, we are including all of the program in the building. So, I know that currently, there is question on whether we're going to be including the ROTC as well as the culinary for middle school and high school in the design. So, right now, we are moving forward with continuing to keep all of the program, all of the classes within one building. So, we're moving forward with that, and we'll show the renderings based off of that going forward. And we're gonna continue to design with that in mind. Currently, the...those two portions being added onto the building based off of just some of the accommodation and the economics of it, if you add those two portions onto the building during construction at this phase, it would actually be about $3 million, which is actually much less expensive than it would be to build on afterwards or to renovate, which is the possibility of renovating and retrofitting the existing cafeteria space in order to accommodate ROTC and the middle and high school for culinary. If you guys are currently thinking about, and I know that's something that's up for conversation, if you guys are considering doing the program that we just mentioned inside of the cafeteria, it could be anywhere from two times to three times the...that $3 million mark. Now, when it comes to funding, I know that we are currently working on getting that additional $10 million to be included in the budget, and that's something that we're working diligently right now with...to get acquired. We are very confident that is going to come into this project and that we would be able to afford the additional...including all of the program in the one building. So, I know as you guys are considering what to do with that cafeteria, I just wanted to kinda give you a full scope of consideration on some of the options that we're putting forward. I do also wanna ask that, you know, as we're moving forward, the sooner that you guys make that decision, the better that we can help you guys plan for that move. Either option that you guys decide to go for, we definitely wanna be there with you during the process to make sure that we can make sure that both programs, the ROTC and the culinary for the middle and the high school, can be fully accommodated in whichever option that you guys decide to go through. So, however you guys decide, just, you know, let us know so we can continue to work with you to make that happen. So, if we can go on to the next slide, we can start looking at some of the actual renderings of the exterior of the building. So, this right here is sort of a stepped-back version. This is the full view of the building right now. We're really looking to elevate...elevate what you guys have here and really try and give you guys something special that you guys can have your children go to, be proud of, something that is unique to this community, but also pulls from what you guys already have here and can kind of represent where you guys are locally in the coastal area. So, right now, we have some really large canopies that provide shading and provide walkways during any type of elements, whether rain or shine. We have, and we'll get more...we'll have some more images. If you wanna go to the next one, we can go to some of the entry images. We have large canopies at the entry, things that really draw you in at that front, something that's going to create a unique entry point, a unique calling point that is going to have your students enter in. And we have large atrium spaces that create a very open space that has areas for both middle and high school. And we're working diligently right now with the...with the staff to make sure that we're accommodating everything that they want and taking into consideration, you know, adjacencies and relationships between classrooms and spaces. So, right now, here at the entrance, you can also see some of the colors that we're trying to bring in. We're trying to bring in that black and gold for you guys, showing that it is a high school. We wanna make sure that people recognize it as a high school. We're looking at having some, you know, pamphlet posts flashed on possibly the windows and making some graphics, because it is a little bit further from that front road right there. We really wanna try and make sure that people, when they drive past, that they see it and they know what it is, and they can recognize it as sort of a beacon in the community. If you could go on to the next slide, please? Again, this is another...another view from the entrance. We're really trying to play levels, too. This is a two-story building, so we're really trying to play with the height and really make a building that's going to draw your eye in, but also is gonna...we're trying to design something, pardon. Design something that is going to be planned well, is going to last a long time for this community, that's going to make sense, that you guys can grow into and work well for both the middle school and the high school, which we are combining into this one building. If you could go on to the next one as well? So, this is a view further back stepping from the road. This is showing a view as if you were keeping the cafeteria there. The cafeteria and auditorium are proud of the building. So, you see those first, and then you'll see the new building sort of beyond. So, it is deeper in the building or in the site. But at the same time, we are really going to try and create pops of color, signage, and things that are really gonna draw your eye into that site and again, make that really special moment. Next slide, please? So, in...sort of in closing, we're...we're really trying to, again, create something for the community. We're looking at trying to plan for the future for you guys. We're trying to master plan this so that this is something that can grow for you guys as well as make sense long-term. Meet your needs now, meet your needs in the future. And, you know, we're doing everything we can to really make a special building on the inside and the outside. And that's gonna be something that your children and your students can grow and learn in and can add to their education and to their future. So, thank you. I'll entertain any questions. We didn't have...
Hold on, wait.
Questions from the board.
Yeah, questions from the board, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, you can...the community support, so right now where we're at has been the teachers, administrators, the administration, everyone has gone into a lot of the details of trying to decide, this is where we want middle school, this is where we want high school, this is where we wanna put this gym, this is where we wanna put these locker rooms, deciding about the cafeteria, the auditorium, where we're gonna move ball fields. So, that's kind of where we are at in those discussions right now. I've had some questions, similar questions from the commissioners, and I told them, I said, "We're still in the design phase." Let us...let us kinda get the design and layout, you know, I guess where we think we need it to be. And I still...I call this the 50-year plan on how we want to utilize this facility and space for the next 50 years. So, I'm gonna say this was incorrect, if I'm wrong. This was a little bit more of a design layout update for the board. And then, as we move forward with other discussions, we'll def... When you...now, as far as community support, I don't...I don't think we're gonna have, like, big open hearings or things like that. But if you do have any support that you'd like to offer us, we definitely would listen. Any questions from the board? Explain again, and I understood what you said, but explain again for us the money difference with the cafeteria.
Yes, so...and just to kinda give you, again, the program that we're talking about keeping within the building currently is high school culinary, middle school culinary, and then the ROTC program, which I understand almost more than a quarter of your students currently are enrolled in the ROTC program. So, as you see on the site, and I can point to what I have here, this portion, this wing right here, is the stacked high school and middle school for the culinary arts. And then, this basically back wing right here almost is entirely ROTC. So, those program right there is what we're considering.
Point to those again facing the other way. Use your other hand. There you go. Yep.
The...so, ROTC is on this side, and then we have culinary stacked for middle school and high school on this end right here. So, and just so you know, we have designed it, in the event that you do not want that within the building, we have designed it on those ends so that we can...
Take it out.
Take them off if required. So, right now, we'll be pricing them as an ad alternate. So, if you decide to go forward, we have everything designed, everything figured out, so you can go ahead and implement that. But if for some reason you decide not to go through with it, it could easily be removed from the program so we can continue with everything else. And then, that program could then potentially be put into the cafeteria.
Okay.
So, the cafeteria itself, I know that it's just giving me when it was built, but I know it's not the newest building, but I do know it is an existing building that is currently on-site and is in use right now. So, right now, if we built all of the program within the building, it would only be an additional $3 million. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but when it comes to the entire scope of the project, when you're already building a building of this scale and you're adding on a little bit more, it is less expensive to go ahead and add on that amount of building now, when they're already doing site work, when they're already doing...they already have masons on-site, they have steel, they have all of these other trades on-site right now. It's easier to do it when there's construction than afterwards, or even a lot...most times, retrofitting an existing building that does not necessarily meet the needs of what needs to go in there. So, right now, what we're talking about, including in the cafeteria, is ROTC and culinary. Culinary, I know, has a lot of different needs. We're working right now with the culinary teachers to...for middle school and high school, and we're talking about full industrial kitchens for the high schoolers and then full residential kitchens for the middle schoolers. So, there's a lot that goes into that that we would need to try and make work within an existing space. And sometimes, that is more difficult. Oftentimes, that is much more difficult trying to get into an existing building than going ahead and building it into a building that we're already building. Does that help explain it a little bit?
So, adding on...excuse me, adding on to the buildings means we would tear the cafeteria down?
That, yes, that would be the option. So, and we don't have today to share, but we do have renderings that would include what would happen to the site if we did remove that. So, on...what would happen is basically, it would open up that front, there would be additional parking, there'd be more green space in that area as well. So, you would be gaining other things when that is also removed, including the program itself.
Do you have a cost estimate on retrofitting the cafeteria?
So, we don't have it exact, but our estimation is maybe anywhere from twice to three times as much as adding that on. So, twice to three times as much as the...
So, it could be $6 million to $9 million, okay?
Because there's retrofits to the interior building, but also the actual building itself. So, the things that need to be done to get the building back up to working order to...it needs a little bit of help in addition. And I think there's more exploration, as well as frankly, there's gonna be more design that's gonna be involved. So, where we are right now, we're building into an existing building or to a new building. Whereas, when you're working with an existing building, you're gonna have to go in and figure out what's there we'll have to do. You know, there's an entire new...other design effort as well as permitting process that a lot of times goes into that as well, as well as a different schedule, so.
Any other questions?
So, is there any scenario that she explained that would cause us to do away with those programs? Maybe I'm hearing about...I'm hearing the calls.
No. No. I mean, that's not anything that I would...I mean, and I know I won't be here for all that, but I...absolutely not. Absolutely not. And if I may, you know, when we first started talking about this, I mean, rightfully so, that was one of the concerns of the commissioners, this building, the cafeteria, was just paid for in September. And then, we would be looking at the initial plan was to remove it, because, you know, in just conversations with the general contractors or whatever, it costs more, not only to retrofit that building, but to work around it as well. However, we're...I'm really torn between the two for all the reasons. I will tell you, the plan without the cafeteria there really does look a lot better. And the folks in ROTC and culinary and the administration would love to all be under the same building instead of having to walk out and go into that. But we're doing that same thing for the auditorium, 'cause the auditorium ad was a $15 million ad, and that was two years ago. So, who knows what it would be now? So, we decided we would keep that. So, already, we know for band and chorus and all that, they're walking out of the building. So, of course, any admin... So of course, any administrators are going to want it to all be under one building. I think it's going to come down to the money, and like she said, they are working on some funding, so I think that's going to probably be what's going to make that decision for us. I think we can make it work if we have, because we're not going to get rid of those programs, because we've got a great culinary program, middle school and high school, amazing, and our ROTC, I mean, speaks for itself. So, and it's a, it is a great building, and we found a great way to continue to use it if we have to, and we'll try to do it the most economical way possible, but also if that makes the commissioners a little softer too while we're doing this, then, you know, I'm all about that too. So, we'll just have to see. The funding is going to be a big deal, so.
Absolutely.
So, some things I like, your ingress and egress is off of the side road instead of all on 55.
Right.
Yes.
And then this Friday night, we'll really know why we'll like all that additional parking space for graduation and other events, that, that is long overdue. We need, we need parking like that.
Yeah, and, and right now, and this is a preliminary site plan, as we move forward, we have a civil engineer that's been working with us from the very beginning, and we'll be fleshing this out to make sure that we meet all the requirements and then some. So we, right now, have planned quite a number of different areas for parking because we do know that they need, we're, we're combining these two schools together, so, and understand that.
So the little place in the southwest corner where you've got like a cul-de-sac coming down and then just-
This piece?
No, go down. All right, now go west.
She don't go west.
Go, go to the other side. Right, right there, yeah.
Yes. So this is, this is a design element, so more than anything, this isn't quite a cul-de-sac, but it's, it's a, sort of a walking path, and this is, again, just a design element, something interesting. I think that there are lots of opportunities that, that could take place in that area. I think we did talk about the fact that there is a drone program here on campus, so it can be interesting to see students out there working with drones and things of that nature. But I, I do think, again, this is sort of a gestural design element at this point that we can continue to work on and define.
You got questions? Now's the time to ask them. I see.
Do you want to move back to any of the elevations? If you go back one or two slides just to see some of the front, maybe the entry one?
And this is a work in progress, but I'm glad to send these designs to you guys.
Yeah.
So I, I got a question about where the auditorium is.
Oh, that's fine, you can show, yeah.
The auditorium is right over here. So this is the existing auditorium that's, that's going to remain, and then this is the current cafeteria, this is the main therapy right here. Just to kind of, this is where we are right now, so just to kind of give you an idea of where we are in terms of the plan, so.
So when you look at it, imagine where the new school is, that's the baseball field currently, and where the parking is, that's where the school is now.
That's where the school is.
That is correct.
So the, the new school will be built first, then when it's functional, then the old building and everything will start coming down, and then the parking will all be put in.
There are a lot of moving parts that we're working on to make sure that there is no lapse in any sort of timing when it comes to the occupancy for the students.
Do you have an estimated construction time that it would take?
Not off the top of my head, but we can get that for you.
Any other questions? All right, here and then, thank you very much, very informative. All right, moving on to 7.2, Ms. Jackson and Dr. Patrick.
Patrick, take it away.
Good evening, board members. Certainly nothing is exciting as in the building. I come to talk about policy. Tonight, you have before you the second reading of Policy 2675, Community College Trustee Appartment, that tonight is up for adoption since this is the second reading.
All right, since, since this is up for second reading, this was presented to us at the last meeting. I think most of the questions or comments have been addressed. If there's no other questions or comments on this, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Just, just one question. So with the direction that they're talking about, removing authority for the board to elect, when, if that comes about, will we just, we have to come back and vote to remove it or will it automatically be removed?
I'm going to let Brian answer that one, but my guess is since, if it, would that be general statute that makes that change, Brian?
Well, if it's changed, whatever the legal basis is, and the policy got dated, then it's void. And it's always good in that circumstance to officially remove it, just so that there's not any misunderstanding as to which controls or why is it there. But yeah, in, in any of these, if, if law comes in any policy and supersedes the school board's policies, you apply the law, you try to then catch up the policies and laws essentially.
But we move forward hoping that does not happen. Any other questions? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. And Dr. Patrick, you can stay right there.
Item 7.3, we have a first read of the 4,000 series policies, and this is just one part of a three-part series for the 4,000 section. The cabinet reviewers, we worked on the policies, then we met with the policy review committee and a couple of the attorneys from Florida Spur to put before you tonight the policies that you have listed.
Okay, again, this is for first reading, so as you review through these, if you do have questions or comments, please, you can address them to Ms. Jackson, Dr. Patrick, myself, or, and we'll, we'll get answers to those. But again, this is first reading, so we've got a month to really review them and, and be prepared for second reading at our July meeting.
What can you talk about?
Okay, we will, July or August meeting, possibly, so.
If I may ask-
Yes.
If we do have a July meeting, if we can add this just as an action item to kind of keep us on track, because we don't want to push it out too far, because we have an initial contract for three years-
Okay.
-if we can get as much done, if we can answer any questions that the board has, if we can get those on the agenda for a second read at the next meeting.
Okay, yep.
If we don't have a July, could we add it to the 28th, or whatever that date was?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we could do that.
If we don't, we can talk about it.
If we, if we don't have a July meeting, we'll add it to that 28 June meeting. Okay, thank you.
And in that context, make sure the board members are aware-
Yes.
-that they're not going to wait till the next meeting.
It'll be on the 28th.
It'll be on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll make sure Tiffany will take care of us. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to 7.4, Mr. Dudley.
All righty. I move that the Pamlico County Board of Education entering to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and GS 115C-402, confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.11A1 5 and 6 and 115C-319, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we will be going into closed session.
From what they said, y'all said, and the choices that we got. Anybody?
All right, we're back in open session, so I'm gonna need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed sessions.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand. All right. Review our next meeting dates, training, and board events, so remember that we do have a special meeting called for June 28th at 5 o'clock, and then you can see the list of our other meetings as they continue through into July through June of next year. So with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor raise your right hand, and we are adjourned.
On my way.
On my way.